Wish to sign up to speak has done so. If you still wish to sign up, please come up at this point. Otherwise, Mr. Gravino will collect the petition and we will get ready to go. The meeting is turning to recess. I will remind the speakers in the audience that we will adhere to the following rules of conduct during this public hearing. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. Secondly, this is a public hearing, and in a public hearing, there is no interaction, there is no discussion. The school committee will not be answering questions, nor will we be asking questions. We will simply be listening to all of the speakers who are here tonight. I would request that whenever possible, the speakers refrain from identifying individuals by name. If you can keep your comments to a more general, rather than specific, personal commentary, I would appreciate that. Speaking of which, the Chair will not tolerate any disparaging comments or personal attacks. The discussion is to be limited to the issue on the petition, which is whether the school committee should post the superintendent of schools position. If I find that your comments are not adhering to that principle, I will first invite you to bring your comments back to the issue at hand. If you fail to do so, I will require you to sit down, even if your five minutes have not yet been used. And if you refuse to sit down, you will be escorted from the room. I want this to maintain decorum and professionalism throughout, and we will listen to each and every one of you with an open mind. And we thank you all for coming and participating in this discussion. With that, I'm going to start with the person who has signed up to speak in favor of posting the superintendent's position, and the first person on the list is Stanley Watrin. Please state your name and address, and this goes for everybody who speaks. If you would please state your name and your home address for the committee.
My name is Stanley Watrin Jr. I live at 148 Maple Street, Barbie 2. You know, I am just going to give a broad overview here. There'll be other speakers that will follow me that will speak about mismanagement, overcrowding, lack of supplies, problems in the special department. And, you know, we, well, the Lynn Public Schools have a $118 billion a year budget. You're about, in another year, you're going to go before the city to request, be able to spend $68 billion more dollars to build a new Marshall. I think, you know, we need to have the best person possible running the schools that, you know, may, I have no idea specifically who that would be. But, you know, it's just a lot of money, and we need the best person doing the job. And, you know, we need to have real involvement. You know, I have two kids in the Lynn Public School system, and as I've told you twice before, my emails are blocked from the Lynn Public Schools. I can't even find out how well my kids are doing in class. And I just think we need to look at maybe a new direction, whether it's with the current superintendent or a person from the outside. Well, like I said, other people will follow with more specific information, including different interpretations of the data. And I'm done for now, and I'd like to donate the remainder of whatever time I have to someone else who needs it. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Mr. Watrin spoke for two minutes and 17 seconds, so there will be about three minutes available for anybody wishing to speak on the in favor side. Next up, we'll have somebody speaking against posting the superintendent's position, and that would be Pat Riley.
Good evening. Pat Riley, 11 Michael Road in Lynn. I've been a lifelong Lynn resident, and I've worked for the school system for 36 years. A year ago, I had an opportunity to move, and I chose to move within Lynn. I have invested as a Lynn taxpayer, a Lynn parent, and a Lynn school employee. I have four kids who graduated from Classical High School. They've, they're older, they've graduated. If they were going into high school, I would, my first choice would be Lynn Public Schools. I'm not going to talk a lot about the data. You all have the data. You've seen the data, we've talked about the data. I have, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the last several years. Lynn has been on the cutting edge looking at the data. I have friends and family who teach in other school systems, and they say to me, whatever you're, whatever we're starting to do, you've already done it and moved on. Kathy led the schools prior to being a superintendent in our first attempts looking at data and making decisions based on that data. She continues to do that, and she's a very strong leader in that avenue. I've worked for several superintendents in the past 36 years. Every superintendent brings strengths to the position. Kathy's strengths are the strengths that we need right now. Kathy's able to make tough decisions. When you're making decisions, as Kathy does, based on the best interest of students in the schools. Sometimes people aren't happy. Kathy, I find Kathy to be a good listener, a negotiator, and, you know, sometimes we disagree, but she talks to, talks to people, and sometimes she has to hold the ground. That's, that's what a leader does. And sometimes she can negotiate a little bit. I am fully in favor of keeping Kathy and not, and not posting that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak in favor of posting the superintendent's position is Laurie D'Amico. And again, please state your name and home address for the record.
My name's Laurie D'Amico, I live at 331 Newbury Ave. I'm a parent of a child who attends Lynn schools. I cannot stress enough how disappointing and disheartening it is to know that my child is forced to attend a school, or attend school in a failing district. To know that your child has not received the education he deserves is extremely upsetting. Fortunately, my child has parents who are able to help him and provide him with the necessary tools and skills that Lynn Public Schools has failed to provide. However, many children do not have this help and support at home. It is absolutely unacceptable for each and every classroom and student not to have the necessary resources and supplies that are needed to ensure a successful learning environment. How do you expect students to learn a subject matter when they do not even have a textbook? How do you expect parents to help their children without a textbook? How do you expect a teacher to teach without a textbook? This issue has been brought to Dr. Latham's attention, but to my knowledge, this has not been resolved yet district-wide. If every single classroom had the necessary required supplies, instead of making parents buy these supplies, which again, is against the law, I've mentioned this at a past school committee meeting, that parents are forced to spend hundreds of dollars on required school supplies because the Lynn Public Schools is not providing them. This is in addition to the hundreds or even thousands of dollars that teachers are forced to spend out of their own pockets for supplies that they need to teach the students. Dr. Latham has assured me that the Lynn Public Schools will stop forcing parents to buy these required supplies. However, she did not assure me that she would make sure these supplies are in fact provided to each and every classroom and student. When I spoke to Dr. Latham about this issue, she put the responsibility of the lack of supplies on the principals of the schools. However, these are district-wide issues and therefore are her responsibility. We have failing schools, and we are a failing district. As I've mentioned before, I was informed by the Department of Education that out of 297 districts in the state, 30 districts are considered the lowest performing 10 percent, and Lynn is one of those. In fact, Lynn ranked 16 out of the 297, which if you do the math, is really more like the lowest 5 percent. I would like to know how this can be defended. I know a lot of blame gets pushed on the fact that we're a diverse city, but I think that excuse is getting old. Dr. Latham thinks there's not enough parental involvement, in that she encourages more, yet she does not respond to the parents who contact her now. This lack of respect for parents gets carried down into the schools within her district. There are teachers, vice principals, principals, and other staff members who also do not respond to parents' concerns. It is absolutely unacceptable. I realize our district is extremely diverse and faces many more challenges than other districts, which in turn does make the superintendent's job more challenging. However, it is for this very reason that it is essential that our district have the most qualified inexperienced person to hold this position. This position requires more than an advanced degree. It requires the ability to remain professional and ethical at all times. It requires the ability to be strong and confident and to be able to face and handle criticism without getting emotional. It requires the ability to take full responsibility for your decisions, actions, and district. It requires exceptional leadership and interpersonal skills and the ability to communicate effectively. It requires the ability to address all parents' concerns and questions, either personally or through a member of your staff. I feel Dr. Latham lacks his essential abilities, and that it is imperative that we search for someone who does in fact have all these necessary skills. The first step in doing so would be to post a position for superintendent and interview other candidates. Our children are counting on you to make sure the most qualified candidate in leading our schools and district. They deserve to be provided with the best possible education, and right now, they are not getting that. If Dr. Latham is as confident in her qualifications as she proclaims, then she will not be threatened by a little competition. And I would just like to add that when I mentioned, you know, some teachers, or principals, or vice principals not responding, I don't want anybody to feel that it's the school that my son attends. He attends Lynn Classical, and I could not be more happier. He has wonderful teachers, I love the principal, the vice principals, his guy is constantly fabulous. So this isn't a particular school, it's just a district-wide issue. Thank you, and if I have any time left to write, too, I would like to donate it to someone.
I'll compliment you on your ability to keep track of time. You had 13 seconds. Next to speak against posting the superintendent's position is Kate Hazelton. And again, if you would please state your name and home address.
My name is Kate Hazelton, I live at 72 Menlo Avenue. I've worked for the Lynn School Department since 1980. I'm a homeowner, I'm a taxpayer, I am the parent of two children, both of whom attended school from kindergarten through grade 12 in the Lynn Public Schools, and have gone on to be very successful thanks to the public, in large part to the public school education that they received here in Lynn. I'm a proud teacher at Lynn Classical High School. I spent many years teaching at Reed when it was a junior high school, and then a middle school. And I started my career here as a substitute teacher in the elementary schools. So I have a pretty good feel for the system at large. I can speak as a parent, as a, as a teacher, and as a taxpayer in Lynn. And I listened very, I was very interested in what the last speaker had to say as she talked about the qualifications for a superintendent. Because as she listened to them, as she listed them, I thought to myself, she's describing Dr. Latham. I mean, Dr. Latham has, she lives in the city, she has lived in the city, she did not move here because this is where her job was. She's the parent of three children, she sent those three children through the Lynn Public Schools, and they have all gone on to do very well. She has been a teacher at the middle school level, she has been a teacher at the high school level. She has taught a basic subject math from the very, very simple and introductory courses up into, up to AP Calculus and as high as you can go. Her math skills absolutely blow me away. She has been a department head. She has worked for the City of Lynn as a liaison between the city and the state, helping us to navigate the challenges that have been foisted upon us by the MCAS test. We don't get to choose our clientele. We have an obligation to all the children of Lynn. And it might be a big surprise to some people in, in this room to see what kind of children, what kinds of children, and the situations that they are coming from, and the challenges they face, and that their teachers face every day when they come into the Lynn Public Schools. And we work very, very hard to meet their needs, to accept those challenges, and to help those children succeed. And I think that we do that. Previous speakers have spoken about statistics. And what I would say to you is to look carefully at the statistics, and to break them down, and look and see what, you know, where are our strong points and where are our weak points? And sometimes it's very, very misleading. Sometimes low scores in a particular school can be the results of the scores of just a handful of children. And I know, and I'm really not good at this stuff, because quite frankly, I'm a French teacher, and I'm not an MCAS, I'm not an MCAS subject yet. But I know that those people who do have to face that all the time, look at those scores, and they can break them down and show you all kinds, kinds of things, and see where we're going. And believe me, we're doing much better than the previous speaker thinks that we are. I think that Dr. Latham has done an exemplary job. She works so hard, and I, I know that she possesses all of the skills that the last speaker spoke of. And really, I, you know, I'm so upset as, as a resident, as a, as a colleague, that we are here yet again for this, for this second bite at the apple, if you will. You can search as far and wide as you want, and I've worked for many superintendents, as I, as I said at the last meeting, but you will never find a more qualified, more competent, more caring person than Dr. Latham, and I just think it would be a shame to post your position.
Ms. Hazelton, did I hear you say you ceded the remainder of your time?
I did, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next to speak in favor of posting the position is Tricia O'Malley.
Hi, my name's Tricia O'Malley, I live at 160 Eastern Ave. I would like to share with you my experience in trying to obtain an out-of-district transfer in the middle schools, and the negative impact it had on my family, due to the inadequacy of the Parent Information Center and its leadership. On March 28th, 2011, I went to the PEC to request an out-of-district transfer from Marshall. I acquired both places, my daughter on the list for both Pickering and Reed, and was told I did not. I then acquired how many students got into Pickering the prior year, and was told approximately 25, Pickering being my first choice, and then put her on that list. I then filled out the form, told I would hear something by the end of June or early July. By the end of June, I was calling weekly for an update. By the third week of July, I knew four of my daughter's friends, non-white friends, that had received transfers into Pickering. In the case of all these four children, I had to first formally request a transfer into Pickering. I called one last time, was still told they had not done out any out-of-district transfers. I then decided it was time to take a ride into the PEC. I spoke to someone who finally told me my bail had been denied for Pickering, and then she placed me on the list for Reed. I'd also done some research on the racial balancing policy. I went back again and spoke to the man that was in charge at the time of the PEC. I told him I thought the policy was illegal. The Supreme Court ruled in 2007 that public schools cannot, in effect, articulate numerical goals or quotas for racial balancing and use these as a basis for assigning or transferring children to schools. I gave him a copy of what I read, and he said basically, "This is how we do it, and have a good day." During this process, I tried to contact the superintendent three times, even going to her office. All I wanted was advice and direction as to what to do to tell her why my daughter was not a good fit for Marshall. I did finally receive a call from someone from her office that was of no help, and told me I probably would not hear anything from Reed until after the start of school. So now, seven days prior to the start of middle school, I did not know where my daughter was going to go to school. The end result was that my daughter had to be put into a costly private school, but because of all the wrong information we received, it was very stressful on her and me. I had to watch my beautiful, smart, sensitive daughter turn into someone I did not recognize for a while. Had we been told in March that there was a one in a million chance of getting out of Marshall, we would have had more time to make alternative school choices. No families should have to go through what we did to transfer a student to a better school. This got to stop. If you'd like to talk to me now, that would be fine, in private. Two of the little Lynn middle schools are Level 3, and probably on the verge of becoming a Level 4 school. Pickering is far from perfect. If you're a white student, you will not, you will only receive a transfer for a medical issue. Most families, myself included, cannot afford private tuition. The middle school situation in Lynn needs to be rectified today. I'd like to donate my time as well. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, who will be speaking against posting the superintendent's position, is
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I don't know how we arrived at this point.
Excuse me, if you would just state your name and address for the record.
Carol McPherson, 56 New Haven, Lynn. I'm an employee of the Lynn School Department. This really has taken me back, really. I've been a Lynn resident all my life. I had three children that attended the public schools, three of them went on and did marvelous, marvelous. I elected a lot of you officials here, you community members, I thought this was your job. I didn't know that we were going to have the public decide whether we should vote for a superintendent or not vote for a superintendent. I, I don't know what, what happened, really. I'd like to know. I'm, I'm not in favor of posting the job. I think she's done a wonderful job. How she functions is beyond me, really. I, I can't understand it, really. I'm not a public speaker, but this has really driven me almost over the edge myself, really. How can anybody go to work every day and function in this capacity? It's beyond me. It really is. This should have been taken care of long before this happened. It should never, ever have gotten to this point. That's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Next to speak in favor of posting the superintendent's position, Melissa Romanello. Please state your name and home address.
Melissa Romanello, 9 Hillcrest Ave. in Lynn. On page 14 of Dr. Latham's State of the Schools address states that Lynn's MCAS scores show gains from the past three years, and that the results are significant considering our first language-not-English population and our free-and-reduced-lunch population, which is the state's poverty, it's the state's poverty, where they consider poverty, is our free-and-reduced-lunch population, is increasing. So both our ELL population and our poor population are increasing. But it's, it's okay, because our MCAS scores are also increasing. This would lead the reader to believe that our poor MCAS scores are due to our ELL population and our low-income population. This is not true. Our special education population is in fact our lowest-performing MCAS population across every school in Lynn, with a few exceptions of Aborn, Shoemaker, and a few others. Special education MCAS scores fall consistently at the bottom. Our two worst-performing schools are Fecto-Lary and the Washington School. The Washington School's MCAS scores are in the 40s. This is most concerning because Dr. Latham's only goal related to special education is to support full inclusion for special ed students. I appreciate that Dr. Latham's only special education goal mirrors the state and federal mandate to educate special education students in the least restrictive environment. But shouldn't we have a superintendent who has goals that directly address improving our special ed population's MCAS scores? Or how about a goal that directly addresses our special education's extremely low graduation rate? Like I said, my name is Melissa Romanello. What you don't know is that I'm a parent of three special education students in the Lynn Public Schools. I volunteer, actually, in addition, I'm a homeowner, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a registered voter. I volunteer my time to help other Lynn parents of special needs children. The figures that I'm going to present to you are from the Massachusetts Department of Education and from Dr. Latham's own State of the Schools address. My own personal experience with Dr. Latham and my special education children was two specific incidences. One, where Dr. Latham was the assistant superintendent, and she attended my son's special education meeting, and actually tried to stop the meeting. The second instance where Dr. Latham had professionally intervened in one of my children's IEP meetings was when the school with the IEP was occurring at, she was contacted, and she told the meeting to stop, and we all had to leave, and it could not continue. Lynn English, 56.6. Classical, 59.1. Tech, 45.3. Fecto-Lary, 19 percent. These numbers represent the graduation rates of our special education population, our most discriminated against, our most marginalized, and our most fragile population of students. This group of students is also the only group of students that is guaranteed an education by the common law. In fact, they all have individual education plans which guarantee them a free and appropriate public education, except this population seems to be ignored by Dr. Latham. In fact, I believe that Dr. Latham's neglectfulness and unprofessionalism towards special education children, parents, and employees of Lynn Public Schools clearly demonstrates that she is not concerned with this population of children. I believe Dr. Latham created a poor professional environment, resulting in the neglect, the neglect of our special ed population, and in the exit of a number of highly qualified and dedicated individuals who could potentially move Lynn forward. I believe it is neglectful to take $1.1 million from the special education budget to pay for administrative jobs. While it may be legal to take excess money from circuit breaker funds to pay for already budgeted line items, it cannot possibly be legal or moral to take money that isn't in an excess and wasn't allocated to pay for previously budgeted line items. We were all at the meeting where Dr. Latham paid for and posted administrative jobs because of this additional money. I believe it is neglectful and unprofessional to erroneously terminate the sped director, the sped director's secretary, Holly Short. Dr. Latham showed her further disregard for special education after a hearing officer determined that Holly was wrongfully terminated.
Excuse me, again, this is on posting the superintendent's position.
And these are all of my reasons why I feel that the superintendent's position should be posted, because presently I don't feel that our superintendent is acting professionally or in the best interest of our special education children.
And I will remind you again to please refrain from using names wherever possible, and I believe it is possible, to relate this incident without naming names.
Okay, I can do that. The superintendent showed further disregard for special education after a hearing officer determined that the sped director- determined that the sped director's secretary was wrongfully terminated and would get her job back. We now have to pay the special education director's secretary for her missed time. We've also employed a second secretary because the original director's secretary has not been fully reinstated. I believe you were all here when the parent had come and spoke and wrote a letter about her child who, in his IEP, received a one-on-one aide. And in his IEP, it was determined that he needed the one-on-one aide to come to school. That parent had to come to this committee and tell you that this position was being not posted by the superintendent. And she had to come to you and speak to you in order to get this position funded and posted, even though it already existed in her son's IEP. It is imperative that our special education population has the very best person for this job. They are the most vulnerable members of our school and they require an advocate that will not neglect them and push them aside. I'd also like to remark since I was at both this hearing and the last hearing where we discussed the superintendent's position, that a number of the speakers were employees of the Lynn public school and they were not residents of Lynn. I think that's important to note because the superintendent has direct control over their jobs. It is also apparent by what happened to the special education director's secretary that she also has purview over other Lynn public school jobs. And I'd like you to remember that as you hear from Lynn public school's employees. Thank you. And I donate the remainder of my time.
I credited 30 seconds just for the record to compensate for that exchange. And with that credit, the speaker was an hour and a minute and 12 seconds over the five minutes allotted and I'll take that from Mr. Watson's time. Thank you. The next speaker to speak against posting the superintendent's position is Debbie Smith-Balsh.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. My name is Deborah Smith-Balsh, 16 Newton Ave, Lynn. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Lynn and I am not employed by the Lynn School Department, although I would be very proud to be employed by the Lynn School Department. I am the Community and Government Relations Coordinator for the Lynn Community Health Center. And the mission of the Health Center is to provide comprehensive health care services to the Lynn community. We have a special concern for youth and adolescents and with the enthusiastic support of the superintendent, we have been able to deliver services to many of the students throughout the district. We appreciate Dr. Latham's work and we look forward to working with her in the future. I'd also like to add that I am a lifelong Linner. I am a homeowner and my children did attend public school in Lynn. They are older now. And I did spend eight years on the Lynn School Committee and 12 years on the City Council and have a great deal of love for this community. I am proud to be here to support Dr. Latham and I do not support the petition to post. I do not support the petition to post the position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next to speak in favor of posting the superintendent's position is Sue Walker.
My name is Susan Walker, 43 Hillcrest Ave, Lynn. I'm a mother of five children and have been involved in the Lynn public school system for 14 years. I'm extremely fortunate that my three youngies go to Aborn Elementary, but the vast majority of the families in Lynn are not having the same positive experience with the other schools in Lynn. The vast majority of the families in Lynn feel like the school system is failing their children. My fifth grader is due to start at a failing middle school in the fall. We're not doing our good school choice because of our race, so my straight A child has to go to a school with some of the lowest MCAS scores in the state. In addition, the high school dropout rate is unbelievably high and Lynn has the ninth-highest teen pregnancy rates in the state. Many of the schools don't even have enough supplies to go around. I understand that many of these issues preceded the current superintendent, but the fact remains that these things are sin and lot of hooey. The violence in the gangs in the middle schools and high schools are out of control. As a parent, I should not have to be terrified to send my child to school and my child should not pretend I'm supposed to go. More than anything, we need a superintendent who has the best interests of the children at heart and to me, taking $1.1 million from the special ed department to hire an assistant for himself is not at all in the best interest of the children. There's also the $100,000 spent annually on the 36 students who spend three weeks at Endicott College. I'm sure that's a wonderful experience for those 36 students. But what about the other 3,948 high school students in Lynn? There are so many kids, they don't even consider college. They don't see it as an option for themselves because their parents haven't gone to college and most of their friends don't go to college. These are the kids we need to spend the money on. In conclusion, we need a superintendent who's there for the children, not the administration, who can lead our school system out of the mess it is in. Open the position up and see if we can find someone with new ideas to tackle these issues. Thank you and I'd also like to donate my time.
Our next speaker against posting the superintendent's position is Darren Seer.
Excuse me, my name is Darren Seer. I live at 50 Morton Hill Ave in Lynn. I'm a parent of two children, attended Lynn schools. One's graduated and lost to the White Council on Lot 3. I too, as many people, speakers have gotten up. I love this city. I grew up here. I could have chose to move into another community, but I didn't. I decided to stay here. I went to public schools, Aborn, Eastern, and Lynn Tech. You know, they were good experiences for me. I got involved in the community and working in the mayor's office back in the 90s, 90s. So I started working with superintendents back then and I've worked with the two previous ones. And I think Dr. Latham is actually, and I'm not putting down the other two superintendents, but I think she's done an unbelievable job in an extremely tough time. Lynn has changed so much in the last 15 or 20 years with the diversity, with the gangs, as one of the speakers spoke about. It's an extremely tough job and one of the reasons that I believe this petition was put to post this job is because we're looking to build a new school, a new middle school. And that's such a complicated, lengthy thing to be doing. I've been involved in that and the state wanted to build a smaller school. And because of Kathy, she went and she got them to add more students to that school. We're in the process of doing that right now. It's just, I can't even explain it to anybody. Anybody can be a Monday morning quarterback and if they think they can really do a better job, or they think they can find someone to do a better job, they're not gonna. Dr. Latham works hard, she puts in a lot of hours. It's a seven-day, 24-hour-a-day job. Doesn't end like most people's jobs at the end of the day. Go home, forget about what's going on. She takes her job home. I mean, I can't even tell you the resumes and the things that we had to do just for the middle school and that's just one part of the job. The laws are always changing and when I hear some of the things that she tells me that's going on in our school district, which is the largest other than Boston in this whole area, the next largest I think is Worcester. We have three high schools, we have three middle schools. We have, I think it's a total of 27 schools in the entire city, but our school population, if you took all the surrounding communities and you combined them, I'm sure you know, we're far greater than what they are. You know, I don't think you're gonna find another person to come in and do the job that Kathy does. I mean, she does it extremely well. She is compassionate, she's easy to talk to, she listens, she works well with the council. We took a vote the other night in front of the city council and it was unanimous. Every single one of them, every single counselor is showing support for the superintendent. I think, you know, honestly, you know, I applaud these parents who want to get involved and want to become part of the process, but this isn't the way to do it. And, you know, put this job out, try to get someone to come in and you're not gonna find anybody any better than the superintendent that we have. Whatever time I have left, I think I can give it to someone else. Thank you for this opportunity.
Next to speak in favor of posting the superintendent's position is Christian Merrill. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Christian Merrill?
Yeah, he's coming.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see movement there.
Christian Merrill, 9 Hillcrest Ave. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. A major concern that I feel has yet to be publicly addressed is specifics regarding the need to support and improve the lower-performing schools within the Lynn Public School District. While the 2012 State of the School Address under Goal 8, Assist and Support Improved Lower-Performing Schools noted the implementation of certain programming and interventions at hearing and conering, these are the only schools mentioned under the quote "lower-performing schools" category, which is indeed understandably given that both are Level IV schools. However, Lynn currently has seven Level III schools according to the MA Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, including four elementary schools, Lynn Tech, and most significantly, the two of the city's three middle schools. This means that a little over a third of the Lynn public schools are either Level III or Level IV, an alarming statistic given that Level III and Level IV schools are in the bottom 20% of the schools serving common grade statewide. Math MCAS proficiency rates at Marshall, one of the Level III schools, has ranged from between just 21, 24% since 2008, while two of the three level schools have limited English proficiency populations with math CPIs or average scores under 50, the equivalent of the low end of the Needs Improvement range. The overall graduation rate, graduation rate in 2011 was down 2% points from 2009 according to both regular and adjusted figures. While attention to these specific areas may be occurring behind the scenes, I think it is imperative that the public be aware of what is happening with all the schools, but in particular, those that are in the most danger of dropping to Level IV status by the end of this calendar year. What are the areas or weaknesses and how are they being addressed? What is being done to address and improve the two middle schools currently at Level III status? The lack of public information regarding the Level III and to some extent, the Level IV schools is concerning and may even be more palpable than when contrasted with the ongoing sense of urgency that Salem Public School District right next door has exhibited regarding all of its lower-performing schools after only one of its schools was declared a Level IV school last fall. Furthermore, a failure to communicate the district's turnaround plans in a similar fashion to the easily accessible schools and district improvement plans published online by districts like Revere, Chelsea, Lowell, and Worcester have placed a certain veil of secrecy on the school department and its goals. Again and again, one has to question where the transparency is and why topics such as middle school math scores or third grade reading proficiency rates are generally not discussed in settings such as school committee and/or other open meetings such that the public is able to ascertain how the district plans to move ahead in terms of its short and long-term goals. Moreover, there has not been a sense given to either the school committee or the school department as to what, if any, targeted interventions have been implemented or are being implemented to address problems at those schools determined Level III and how LPS plans to maintain and/or improve its Level I and II schools. Part of the reason that many parents begin to look for alternatives to Lynn public schools, whether it is a private charter school or Catholic school, is due in part to this lack of communication and available information regarding the district's improvement initiatives. Although Lynn performs the best among urban districts in the term of MCAS proficiency rates, there is much room for improvement. While the first half of that statement is often reiterated, the later half seems to rarely acknowledge, to be rarely acknowledged, which is frustrating to say the least. More importantly, noting that urban district comparison in the face of parental or resident concerns can be perceived as invalidating or dismissive. We need to hear and understand, what we need to hear and understand are Lynn-specific answers and solutions to Lynn-related questions or concerns. What is being done to address low MCAS scores at certain schools would be more satisfactorily answered by addressing how Lynn will handle its own challenges, not a general assessment of the urban district's ranking. Specific details concerning all plans and decisions should be high priority, especially given the prosperity for many Lynn parents and taxpayers, to assume that preventing lowest Level III schools from dropping to Level IV status or increasing the graduation rate are not just a concern because no one is discussing these issues publicly in any adjusted form. More communication is what is needed and has been sorely lacking. The bottom line is that parents, taxpayers, and the community members deserve to know what is going on within the Lynn public schools system because at this point in time, we have in some ways been completely left in the dark and permitted to believe only the worst. That's it and I'll go on. [applause]